Testing, testing. Good morning ladies and gentlemen, good morning, good morning. We'll be getting started here momentarily. But I would like to announce for those, recognizing there's very limited seating. So if, for those that do not have a seat, we actually have two overflow rooms that are available. We want to be cognizant of the fire hazards and so those that are on the back wall, if you can find your seats, that would be great, but we'll be getting started here in the next minute or so.
Good, Jake, happy new year.
Give hugs.
Me too, I'm gonna hug you too. Hey, how are you? Happy new year.
Good to see you.
Happy new year.
Sir? Good, good, good.
Life was good, right?
Exactly. I know, right? That's right.
Good afternoon to those of you sitting on the, I mean standing against the wall. You cannot stand against a wall, it is a fire.
Alright ladies and gentlemen, we will go ahead and get started. So if you can kindly take your seats, and again, let's be cognizant of the, of the back wall. You ready? Alright. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alright, now we talking. Thank you for joining us this morning for the inauguration ceremony for the city of Oakland and the Oakland Unified School District. We are honored to have you here for this important occasion. Please rise for the presentation of our colors by the Oakland Fire Department Honorable Guard. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. I would now like to introduce Kev Choice to deliver our City of Oakland Love Life Acknowledgement.
Good morning, City of Oakland, beloved citizens, beloved people. Give thanks for this day. Let's take a breath, center ourselves in this energy and this space of this proceeding today. And I will read our Love Life Acknowledgement. We acknowledge that in service to our beloved city of Oakland and all people who inhabit this community, adhering to the city of Oakland's official motto, Oakland Love Life, established in 2016 in memory and honor of sixteen-year-old Louise Lacy, who lost her life to a senseless act of violence in 1997. We enter into this space committed to embody love as the guiding principle in our words, our actions, our spirit, intentions, and with regard to each other and all who engage and enter into this meeting space. We acknowledge Oakland Love Life is our motto as we denounce violence in all forms and the conditions that create it. We commit to working against these conditions to create a safe space for all to operate in love and peace in our beloved city of Oakland. We acknowledge that when we demonstrate love, we also manifest qualities of respect, kindness, grace, truth, understanding, humbleness, and forgiveness towards each other. We commit to acts of love as an intentional force to generate tangible solutions in regards to all policies, declarations, recommendations, resolutions, appointments, and actions, and on this day inaugurations. We recognize as leaders, we must set an example and precedent for those of us who have entrusted us with these duties. We accept the responsibility to make our city a better place by bringing inspiration instead of insults, contributions instead of complaints, constructive feedback instead of criticism, and even in our passion for all issues, no matter how difficult. We lead with the guiding principle of love, Oakland Love Life. We ask that all who participate today in this event and this proceedings to share with us in this commitment and practice of exhibiting love, good faith, positive energy, respect, and consideration on how you comment, present information, report out, or inform on this meeting. We appreciate all contributions to the space and even when expressing hurt, harm, disappointment, dispute, or disagreement, we request that you lead with love in your heart. We acknowledge love in practice and when there are differences in opinion, strategies, procedures, and process, we seek to find common ground and tangible solutions that demonstrate love for our city, the residents, and its constituents. We acknowledge that when we recognize and model this practice of love, it will establish a norm that will resonate and be exemplified throughout the city of Oakland and create the change we all wish to see. We acknowledge that when we lead with love, we are also able to uplift a thriving city rooted in equity, equality, justice, inclusion, and opportunity for all regardless of race, gender, age, class, socioeconomic status, nationality, religion, housing status, sexual orientation, or political affiliation. We acknowledge that when we uplift love, we uplift those impacted by violence of all and any kind. And we acknowledge that when we uplift love, traditions of our ancestors, our youth, our elders, our arts, our culture, our businesses, our educators, our unhoused, our civic servants, and all who contribute to the fabric and well-being of our community. Oakland Love Life. We commit to the action of Love Life as our motto and our mantra. Thank you, Oakland Love Life.
Alright, thank you Kev Choice, to the Oakland Fire Department Honorable Guard, and thank you all for joining us today. My name is Justin Johnson and I serve as the City Administrator for the City of Oakland. It is truly an honor to also serve this morning as your emcee for today's ceremony as we administer oath of office to the individuals chosen by Oakland voters to serve them and lead them. You're going to be hearing important remarks from all of our newly elected or re-elected officials, so I will keep it brief to open us up. Today, we'll be swearing in council members to represent communities from across Oakland, from deep east Oakland, to the Fruitvale, to the North Oakland area. We'll also be swearing in a new city attorney. And finally, we are delighted to be joined today by our partners in service, the new school board members for the Oakland Unified School District. These are, oh, go ahead now. Go ahead, it's alright. This is a celebration, don't be shy about it. So these officials will be taking office in a variety of roles, bringing with them an incredible range of backgrounds, communities, and experiences. What unites them all and what brings us all together is a commitment to service. Every single one of them has worked incredibly hard to carry the honor of serving the people of Oakland. As your City Administrator, I get to work with our honorable City Council and City Attorney every day, and I know the individuals being sworn in this morning are humbled and dedicated by the remarkable honor of being given this opportunity to serve. We also know that leadership is a responsibility. The individuals being sworn in today have all asked Oakland voters for the sacred responsibility of leading Oakland at a time when that leadership has never been more important. The road ahead of us is marked by challenges and incredible opportunities that we will meet with integrity and dedication. Oaklanders deserve our very best, and I know with the leaders we are swearing in today, we have the team we need to deliver for them. And finally, we know that to deliver our best for Oaklanders, we will need to work together. Inclusion, respect, and collaboration will be essential to meeting the challenges we face with strength and to making the very most important of the opportunities that we have. From our elected leaders, to our engaged communities, to our incredible workforce of dedicated professionals, I know we will rise to the moment together, this year and beyond. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to the officials joining us at the dais. District one, City Council Member-elect Zach Unger. District three, City Council Member Carol Fife. District four, Council Member, and congratulations and welcome back, Johnany Ramachandran. District five, Council Member Noel Gallo. District six, Council Member Kevin Jenkins. District seven, Council Member-elect The Gun Show, Ken Houston. At-large, Council Member-elect Rowena Brown. City Attorney-elect Ryan Richardson. And I want to acknowledge our council members leaving their respective offices. Inter-Mayor Nikki Fortinato-Boss, who represented District two. District one, Dan Caw. District seven, Triva Reed. At-large, Council Member Rebecca Kaplan. And it is also my pleasure to acknowledge Assembly Member Mia Bonta. Alright, so our Oakland Unified School District officials at the tables here with us are Michelle Vasquez, Student Director. Maximus Simmons, they're in class today, understood. Okay, understood. Director Clifford Thompson, District seven. Director Jennifer Brohard, District two. Director Van Cedric Williams, District three. Director Valerie Bachelor, District six. Director Jorge Lerma, District five. Edgar Rakestraw Jr., Parliamentarian. Board President Mike Hutchinson, District four. Board President Benjamin Sam Davis. I would also like to take this moment to acknowledge City Attorney Barbara Parker. In addition, City Auditor Michael Houston. Also, former Mayor Libby Schaaf, I understand she's here. And also Patrice Berry. Alright, sounds good. Oh, who am I missing? Rachel Lada, please forgive me. And welcome. Janine, how are you? I've been looking for you. And welcome, Janine.
Thank you.
And at this time, I will call on City Clerk Asha Reed, who will now begin the oath of office. Clerk Reed, please take it away.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I'm gonna be performing the oaths for the council members for Districts one, three, five, seven, and at-large. If you could please stand and raise your right hand. As you all know, you don't have to repeat after me, you would just affirm the oath by saying I shall or I will. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, and the Charter of the City of Oakland, and will truly, unto the best of my ability, perform the duties of City Council Member, City of Oakland. Thank you and congratulations to you all.
And at this time, I would, I'm delighted to have each of the newly sworn and re-elected, newly sworn and re-elected council members to share a few words for about five minutes. So I will start with District one Council Member Zach Unger.
And just before you begin, Council Member Unger, you have five minutes and the timer is before you. I will be running it, so just be aware of your time as you give your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much, my fellow Oaklanders. It's an incredible honor to stand before here today. And I think anybody with any sense could see that the honor is not mine, but it belongs to everybody else, all of my fellow Oaklanders. And, you know, it's not even so much honor that I feel, but gratitude. First and foremost to my family, to my dad, Richard, who had the good sense to bring me here fifty years ago, to my kids Percy, Mac, and Zeke. We got some Oakland Tech Bulldogs in the house over there. They're developing into the sort of kind, courageous, civic-minded, open-hearted people that Oakland is so good at producing in our young folks. And my wife, Shona, without whom none of this would be possible. None of this would be possible and none of this would be any fun, so thank you. And my gratitude goes out to all of the city workers I see here and in the gallery and going to work like they do every single day on every other Monday. This is how our city runs. These people, these workers on city property, on job sites, on businesses both small and large, they're the ones who make this city function. Oakland, I know, is not always an easy city in which to work or to own a business. And the dedication, resilience, and creativity shown by our Oakland workforce, both public and private, is something we can never take for granted. And as with any family, you know, we love all of our siblings equally, but I need to single out one group for some extra special love. And that is my friends, my colleagues, my true second family in the Oakland Fire Department. Being sworn in here today is wonderful, but it pales in comparison to the honor of having locked arms with these folks over the last three decades. Locked arms in times of joyous celebration and success, and also in times of true hardship, tragedy, and suffering. I rest easy knowing that my own family is protected by these folks every single day. Anything that I accomplished as a council member is dwarfed by the acts of selflessness and heroism that the Oakland Fire Department shows every single day. So I thank you OFD, I thank you Local 55 for allowing me to be part of your ranks for the last twenty-seven years. You know, I would love to be coming into government at a time of abundance, but we all know that this is a time of truly terrifying scarcity in which we all have to make some terrible choices. There are no programs in the city of Oakland that were started by craven people with bad intentions. Instead, there are only crucial programs. Our police, our firefighters, our libraries, our parks, our senior centers, our arts community, and on and on and on. We have terrible choices ahead of us. And the only way to survive the next few months is by rejecting the dichotomies and zero-sum thinking that tear us apart. I reject the false choice between public safety and civil rights. We can and we must have a police department that keeps us safe while also protecting the most vulnerable in our community. I reject the idea, thank you. I reject the idea that labor and business must be eternally at odds. We can protect a vibrant middle class with safe, stable, organized jobs for everyone while also not demonizing the desire of businesses to turn a profit and expand their footprint. These bogus oppositional narratives that we sometimes create, tech versus blue collar, this neighborhood versus that one, newcomers versus long-timers, that does nothing but hold us back. This is an all-hands-on-deck moment for Oakland, and we rise and fall on the strength of our ability to work together. To that end, we must embrace a modest politics, a politics that focuses on the basics of what a city can provide realistically. We're at our best when we focus on the pragmatics of problem-solving and at our worst when we attempt to locate ourselves within larger ideological movements. We should write fewer new laws and instead enforce the ones we have on the books and actually make sure that they work rather than just being something we can point to and say I passed that. To my colleagues on council, I say this. We will frequently disagree in every possible permutation of the eight of us sitting up on the dais, but you have my word that I will never allow these disagreements to curdle into enmity. I reject factionalism, score-settling, personal aggrandizement. If we don't work as a team, we're gonna fail. And as I take this oath of office, it occurs to me that we make a lot of promises to people, we tell a lot of people what it is we're gonna do, but it's very rare that we take an actual oath. At this point, only three times before in my life. Once on my wedding day, once when I was sworn into the Fire Department, and once when I was elected as a labor leader for the and once when I was elected as a Labor Leader for the Oakland Firefighters. Today's number four. And an oath means something. It means more than a promise. In this case, it means putting the citizens of Oakland ahead of ourselves, working for the greater good, protecting the interests and the safety of those who put their faith in us. I make this oath to all of you. To my family, sitting there in the front row, I make this oath. To my colleagues on the council. And to everybody in the City of Oakland. It is with extreme gratitude that I take this oath to all of you. I thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Councilmember. Alright. District Three Councilmember Carol Fife.
I just told the clerk to put another fifteen minutes on the clock for me. I'm kidding. I actually did not prepare remarks today. I honestly thought, because it was my second go-around, I wouldn't have the opportunity to speak. That said, I am so deeply honored to be here with you all today for the residents of District Three choosing me to be their representative again, for the second time at a time where everyone feels so polarized, and there's so many people who feel helpless and hopeless. I am here to represent that there is hope for Oakland, for bringing us together, for getting through some of Oakland's toughest challenges together. So as our former Speaker just said, our newly-elected Councilmember Unger, I am here to work in partnership, not only with my council colleagues, but also with our school board directors, with our former Councilmember Nikki Fortinato-Bass, our former President on the Board of Supervisors, with our Assemblyperson... Where's Assemblyperson Bonta go? The point is, in order for us to thrive and move forward, we have to do that collectively, as a unit. And there are many people who are peddling fear to stifle us from coming together. We see that so drastically at the federal level, where division will literally shut down the government. I will not allow that, not on my watch. So if I have to put aside my desire so that we can be unified in moving the city forward, that is what my commitment to you is. I will not settle for the arguing and bickering that we've too often seen in these chambers. I want every single person, whether I agree with them or not, to have their voices heard. And we will work forward and work toward the best interests of this city, because every single one of you in this chamber deserve it. Every one of you. So that means we have to move with full transparency, integrity, and honor. And I hope that you all that are not in my district, that didn't get the opportunity to vote for me, and thank you for having window signs outside of my district to support my candidacy, but I hope that you all know that you can come to me and to our offices to push for that agenda of moving Oakland forward together. And I appreciate all of the families who came out here to support your loved ones, because it's not just about us here. It's about you all participating as well. Your voices are the life's blood of this city. So be engaged, be activated, and remember that we do love life here. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Alright, Councilmember Gallo, if you can share a few words. We'd love to have you come on up. What do you have to say, Mayor? Okay. He's efficient.
Thank you, thank you. And I want to, first of all, express my appreciation to the support that I've received in the past. Having grown up here in East Oakland, certainly from the churches, the pastors, to the schools, to the neighbors, residents, nonprofits in the area. I really want to thank you for the encouragement to continue to serve on the council, because the reality here in Oakland, we have an emergency. And we can do all the talking we want, but we gotta take action. And it's gonna require all of us that are here in Oakland, not just the council, the mayor, and employees, but it's gonna take all of us to bring Oakland back to where it used to be, on a positive track. But in saying all that, I want to first acknowledge and recognize my family that are here, President Alisa, if you're Alisa Gallo. You're here. Alisa, my daughter Amanda, I see Amanda. Selena, is Selena present as well? And Gianna could make it today, because she's at work. Noah, is Noah present also? Noah Gallo, thank you for joining us. And at the end of the day, they were my best educators, teachers, in Oakland. Seeing them go through the Oakland Public Schools and their experiences led me to get involved with the Oakland Board of Education for a number of years. But at the end of the day, I want to thank you for your support, the family's support. They're graduates from Oakland High School, Fremont High School, and they went on to UC Berkeley, Stanford University, UC Davis, and received their undergraduate and master's degrees. And now they continue to be employed, working for government, Alameda County, regional parks, and so forth. And, but I want to give special recognition and thanks to the family, because at the end of the day, it's about our children and families. And raising children and families here in Oakland with our Oakland Unified, certainly we know the challenges that are occurring within the classroom, within the neighborhood. And so I'm grateful for that, and I'm extremely grateful for the support that I received throughout the years. One of the reasons why I got involved with politics. I want to thank Pastor J. Alfred Smith from Allen Temple. And he's the one that's in the well. You gotta get out there and get involved in the community and run for school board and so forth. And I still hear from him. I know he's in a different path, but I still hear from him, and Bishop Bob, as well, and some of the other ministers and churches. And, but in closing for me, I just want to say, it's not about what you say, but what you do. We can make a lot of promises, a lot of more rules and order, and more policymakers, but it's what we do in the neighborhood. What do we do in East Oakland and West Oakland to make sure that our children have a quality education? Why do we have to worry about the lead-in-the-water issue? When Oakland's had four, five million sitting in the bank dealing with lead and the paint, but we didn't use it? What about Alameda County? They've had nine million dollars sitting in their bank, and most of us to go... It's supposed to go to Oakland, but they're sitting on it and not using it. And so for me, my role in the near future is to work with other governmental bodies from the Oakland Unified School District, Alameda County, the State of California, and certainly, you know, we need all the support. But at the end of the day, I want to just remind you that as residents, as neighbors, we need to be engaged to make sure that Oakland becomes a safe, clean environment. A safe, clean environment for our children to feel safe going to school. And I just want to let you know that as an example, three, four of my employees out of my city council office, they're out there at six in the morning to 1:00 PM every day, Monday through Sunday, dealing with the streets, cleaning up our neighborhoods, cleaning up our parks, and also cleaning around the schools. To make sure that your children can walk to school and walk back home like we used to be able to do. But anyways, thank you, and I look for the cooperation and work together here at the city council. But most of all, I will be reaching out to other governmental bodies in Oakland to contribute support, because at the end of the day, we as residents are paying everyone's salary, from the Fire Department, the Police Department, other employees. We need you all in the streets to make sure our city gets back to being a safe, clean city. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gallo. Councilmember Houston, come on up.
I want to give the school board, I want to give everybody here at the council, I want to give everybody in the audience an applause, because everyone in here deserves applause. Can I get an applause for everyone in here, please? I always have something to say, always, right? So I... Now, because I wanted to do it natural. I'm so humbled, so humbled to take this position. And I wanted to say this, I want to give a special, special, special applaud to Noel Gallo. I used to watch him on the board with you guys, right? And said, "Wow, you're nice to go." I worked with him on the board. And then I come and see him on council, and I'm able to sit next to Noel Gallo. Legendary. Come on, just give him a round of applause, please. And I got thirty... I got five minutes, right? I'm gonna take thirty seconds. And I'm gonna bring it down a little bit. We had, what, eighty-seven homicides in the City of Oakland. Eighty-seven. The sixty-seventh homicide in Oakland was one of my, um, stipend workers, or one of the people that worked with me with this team right here. Come on up, come on up, come on up. He was one of the sixty-seventh homicides. I was the director of the Beautification Council, 501(c)(3) nonprofit, right? I had to resign. And I worked with these ladies and gentlemen from the justice-impacted and the unhoused population to actually make true change. Give them dignity, respect, and give them some money. To how you know, the only way we can change this city is come together, love life, right? I didn't have a speech. I honor each and every one of you. I want Maria, Heather, come on up, because I gotta put you on Front Street. Come on up. I had to resign from this, something that I built. I built from the scratch with Miley. He supported me, I built it. It was called the East Oakland Beautification Council. And I had to actually take my name off something that I felt passionate about, change that I wanted to make to my city that I love. I am the son of Oakland. Born and raised, third generation here. Went to Castlemont, Madison, Stonehurst Elementary School. I am proud of this city. I'm gonna fight for this city. And let me tell you something, I have no filter. None. I honor each and every one of you. Hey, Nellie, what did I used to always say? What did I say? I said...
Do I have the permission to speak to you?
That one too. That was giving respect, right? But then I said, "What about my job?" Did I say what?
Oh, yeah, um, take my job.
They took my job. They took my job. I respect you guys. You guys got a whole bunch on your shoulders now. You guys, you're the director in operation, right? So I want to give you guys that's out in the streets, and people think I actually clean the streets, right? No, we build, light, beautify communities. I work with Noel Gallo. But what we do, or you guys do now, is building lives and beautifying communities. So I want to honor everyone in this room, and I want to talk to Oakland right now, the ones that actually voted for me in District Seven. My oath to you is dignity, and I'll do it in the best... Every move I make, I promise I'll do it in the best interest of Oakland. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember. Alright. Councilmember Rowena Brown.
Good morning, Oakland, how are you? You know, I'm really just so humbled and honored for this opportunity. I'm really grateful and looking forward to working alongside my amazing city council colleagues. And I'm really grateful for all the friends and family that flew really far to be here today with me. My Aunt Stephanie. Those of you who, on the campaign trail, maybe heard a little bit about my personal story, you all will know that, you know, I lost both of my parents at an early age. And I just want to shout out my Aunt Stephanie, who's here. And my cousin Nicole. Hey, Chris. But I really just want to first start off with some thank yous. And so, of course, you know, I'm here because of the voters of Oakland. Oakland voters said they wanted change, and they believed that, they believed in my leadership. And so, thank you to the Oakland voters. And thank you to every labor union leader and member that volunteered, and those that donated and showed up to connect with voters on my behalf. Thank you to my team, Catherine Liu, Ivan Garcia, Ross, Jacob, Danielle, Chiamaka, Terrence, Georgia, Dory, Tay, Brian, Ross Adams, Ryan, and Monsour. Thank you to the amazing mentorship that I've had. Assemblymember Mia Bonta, Councilmember Courtney Welch, Councilmember Triva Reed, Councilmember Dylan Bolt, School Board President Sam Davis, and Rudy Gonzalez. And thank you all for being here, and then those who are watching virtually, thank you. And so many of the supporters of mine that has supported me for years and decades. As I mentioned, this win is not for me, but for a better, brighter future for Oakland. And the best way that we can do that is together. As I was thinking about what I wanted to say to you all on this amazing day, I was thinking of, what is the definition of servant leadership? Servant leadership is a leadership style that prioritizes serving others over personal gain. Servant leaders aim to create an environment for those around them that they can thrive and do their best work. They do this by focusing on others, building trust, teaching others, and fostering community. These are all things that I've had the amazing opportunity in various roles that I've had, whether when I was, you know, teaching civics education, working as an optician. And for many of you who know me from my days actually working here in Oakland City Council, and then working alongside State Assemblymember Mia Bonta. And so it's really those qualities that I look forward to continuing to bring in this new position that I'm so very honored to have. And I know that we have some really tough times ahead, both locally and at the national level. And yet, my heart is overjoyed for the opportunity to work alongside all of you to really help uplift Oakland and create an Oakland that serves as a positive vision for other cities. And I know that we can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. So at this time, I would like to turn the floor back over to our city clerk, Asha Reed, who will deliver the oath for our newly-elected city attorney.
Good morning again, everybody. City Attorney Richardson. You don't have to repeat after me, just raise your right hand. I will perform your oath. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, and the Charter of the City of Oakland, and will truly, into the best of my ability, perform the duties of City Attorney, City of Oakland. Thank you, and congratulations.
Wow, thank you, thank you, everybody. I'm gonna keep this short, in part because I know this is a long program, but also because I will get choked up if I try to go on too long. I want to echo some of the things that have been said already, especially by our esteemed city administrator, about my perception that we are in a point of opportunity for our city. We... I'm not gonna go over all the challenges we face, because everybody in this room knows, we know too well what they are. We also know that we have an unprecedented amount of new folks coming in to our leadership. And as I'm thinking about it, the same goes for our esteemed school board as well. Huge challenges and a lot of new leadership coming in. And I think where a lot of people would look at that and only see a potential crisis, I think that there is an opportunity. There's a saying that every crisis presents an opportunity. I don't quite believe that. I've been through some crises that are nothing but a crisis. But I do think this is one of those crises. But I do think this is one of those crises that is an opportunity. I think that with the new folks that we have coming in, um, they have no choice but to jump right into the deep end. They have, there is no choice but for them to roll up their sleeves and get, immediately get to work. We also have with them, so many folks coming in new. A lot of them don't, literally don't know the definition of business as usual in Oakland, which I think could be a good thing. I think there, there are obviously things that we've been doing that we need to, to change. There's things that we need to hold on to, but I, I, I am looking forward to having a fresh, many fresh sets of eyes on some of these problems. So as your lawyer and your counselor and your colleague, and on behalf of my office, but also as your constituent, um, and, and resident of Oakland, I, you have my full support. I'm, I'm ready and willing and, and really pumped up about working with all of you. Um, we have a lot of work to do, but we're gonna get it done. I want to take some time to thank some of the people that, that have helped, uh, helped me on this path. Some of the folks that were with me all summer, I want to thank them by name. Folks in my office, Laura Lane, Celia Warren, Brian Mulry, Christina Lum. They, they spent many, many hours with me this summer, uh, helping us get to where we are today. I also want to thank Julie Caskey and Jennifer Foster. Tireless, tireless workers with me this summer. And, uh, my campaign consultants, Doug Linney and, and Donald Lathbury. Also, if you spent any time with me this summer, you heard me talk about my family, the family that, that raised me, uh, and also the family that I've been raising for the last twenty years, twenty-six years, actually. So you, if you've spent any time with me this summer, you know that I, I talked about being raised by a family of public school educators. Some, some of them are here today. Uh, my mom and my stepmom, Gail Richardson-Cult and Lorraine Richardson are here with me. Uh, you also heard me talk about my wonderful mothers-in-law, which were part, a big part of the reason that my wife and I moved up to the Bay Area many, many years ago. Sholi Malawa and Nan Schlossberger are here with me today as well. And then you heard me talk about my current nuclear family. Um, my wonderful wife, Zaya Malawa. My daughter, Madison Richardson. And last but not least, my son, who if you were, also if you spent any time with me this summer, you probably met because he was my, uh, my roadie, my, my, one of my campaign consultant kitchen cabinet members. Uh, he, he asked me if I was gonna call him out specifically, I think jokingly, but I really had planned to. And that's my son, Miles Richardson. And I also include in the, in the family portion of my acknowledgements, my, my mentor, the mentor of my legal career. I've had, I've had a few, but, but in the legal profession mentors mean a lot, as they do in most professions. But, um, for most lawyers, there's usually that one mentor who is the mentor of your career. And for me, that's our city attorney, Barbara Parker. And then finally, I want to thank the city of Oakland. Uh, I've, I've had a lot of blessings and a lot of opportunities in my life, and I'm very grateful for those. And I'm very cognizant and aware of how privileged I am. I, I, it's, I feel a duty and I feel an honor to give back. A lot of the blessings, not a, a lot of the blessings and privileges in my life have been because of the opportunity I've had to live and work in this city. I appreciate the trust that's been placed in me. Uh, I look forward to, to serving, to serving all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Richardson. So at this time, I will turn the floor over to our city clerk, who will convene our meeting into our next, uh, public meeting.
Good morning, Steel, and welcome to the special city council meeting of Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-five. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, please fill out a speaker's card and return that card to the two clerk representatives at the front of the chambers before the item is called for discussion or an hour and a half after the start of the meeting. On roll call for this meeting are councilmembers Brown,
Present.
Councilmember Fife,
Present.
Councilmember Guyo,
Present.
Councilmember Houston,
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins,
Present.
Councilmember Ramachandran,
Present.
And Councilmember Unger,
Present.
Showing seven members present at this time as the District Two seat is vacant. And because we are in uncharted territory at this time, the council members will need to elect a chairperson of this meeting. So if there is a motion of someone who would like to chair this meeting today.
Make a motion to nominate Councilmember Guyo to chair this meeting.
A second motion.
So there is a motion by Councilmember Ramachandran, seconded by Councilmember Houston, for Councilmember Guyo to chair this meeting today. On roll. Okay. Is on roll, Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife,
Aye.
Councilmember Guyo,
Aye.
Councilmember Houston,
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins,
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran,
Aye.
And Councilmember Unger.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one vacant.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Take us to the next item.
Going to item three on this agenda, which, I'm sorry, did you have any announcements or any actions for special orders for the day?
No, just go ahead. We, we want to recognize the public and thank the public, but let's go ahead and move on.
Going to item three, which is adopt a resolution electing a council member as president pro temp of the city council of the city of Oakland for a term beginning January sixth, twenty twenty-five and ending January fourth, twenty twenty-seven pursuant to City Charter Section two zero eight.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Uh, motion to Noel Guyo to be that president pro temp.
Second.
Councilmember Ramachandran?
Yeah, second.
Can I do the public speakers?
There's speakers?
Yeah, of course.
Well, let's hear from the public. Thank you.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. If you submitted a speaker's card and you were participating via Zoom, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you, only if you submitted a card. Supervisor Nikki Fortinato-Bass, Brad Erickson, Cynthia Munoz-Ramos, David Boatright, Mr. Hazard, Jennifer Finley, in any order, please approach the podium.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I just wanted to have an opportunity, and for the record, Nikki Fortinato-Bass, Alameda County Supervisor for District Five. I really, I really just wanted to have a very, very brief opportunity to say greetings, to thank you all for your incredible service and to wish you well. Um, as you heard, there are important challenges, which we are very well aware of. However, as Attorney Richardson said, I hope we can find the opportunity to take this moment to work together, uh, to really collaborate in a much deeper way and to really center the underserved, uh, the most vulnerable here in Oakland so that we can really turn the corner and make our city the safe, clean, thriving place it needs to be. You have some important decisions in front of you for these offices. Um, I do want to share, having served four years as council president and even, uh, over the past three weeks as interim mayor, um, we really need your leadership. We need your leadership to be focused, to work hard, no matter how long it takes, to listen, to bring folks together, and keep your eye on the prize in terms of the decisions that will move Oakland forward. Thank you.
Next speaker, please come on up and present.
Happy New Year. On this journey you have already embarked, there are gonna be challenges. And I hope the council does not restrict public comment to one minute. You talk about listening to the public? We're entitled to at least two minutes on an item. Not to listen to you rant and rave. Listen to what the public has to say. For instance, where for a whole year, I talked to you about, not the new ones, about fentanyl. Fentanyl being a public health crisis. You ignored it, Guyo, even though the council approved it in June to put a public health crisis on fentanyl. Just like you have a public health crisis for HIV, for cannabis, you could take that off, and homelessness. Averus legislation addressing the alarming rise of youth fentanyl, Guyo, related deaths is signed by the governor, A.B. twenty-four, twenty-nine. Put fentanyl as a public health crisis. The curriculum in the schools, they have to have a fentanyl education curriculum. It's killing our children. Put it as a public health crisis on the agenda in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard, your time is up. I have Brad Erickson, Cynthia Ramos, Jennifer Finley, David Boatright. If you're in the chambers and you wish to give comment, please step to the podium.
David Boatright, District Four. Uh, my main comment is about consistency. And I noticed that, uh, for the position of pro temp, it was a one or two-year period. And, uh, it was set at two. And for the president, it was set at two years with no option for one year. Is there a reason for that inconsistency? I noticed it was, it was actually set at two for both, and that may be the reason. But that seems like an inconsistency to me. And what other inconsistency is multiple times this morning, uh, there was a request that people were standing around the edge, were creating a safety hazard. And I noticed that there's still a lot of people standing around the edge. I went downstairs and, and sat through the meeting where the visibility is not quite as good. And I think for consistency purposes, you ought to follow through on your directives. And one last thing is, uh, I came to this meeting not knowing that there were tickets required to sit in this room. And I think the city could do better communicating what the requirements are for, for their meetings. Thank you.
You, thank you.
At this time, all names were called. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Otherwise, uh, all names have been called.
All the speakers have been called. Anyone on Zoom that we need to, no? Okay. Thank you, members of the council. Yes, councilmember.
We didn't call these, uh, two items on the agenda together, the president and the president pro temp. Um, so I'm just speaking to the motion and second for, um, the item that we're on. I want to say that Council President Bass, for this council, for people who don't know and don't see what goes on behind closed doors, has been one of the, if not the best administrator of this office that I've ever experienced. I've only been elected for four years, but I've been coming to this council, to, to meetings, as many of you all know, for a decade, a, a little over a decade. And to see these meetings run in the way that they do, the way that she wrangles all of the council members to make sure we have quorum, the way that she's organized our sister city from Japan coming to Oakland to visit, um, and working with our secretary, Susan, uh, there's, there's so much more than you all can ever imagine that goes into being a, a council president. And I want to be clear that whomever we choose, I'm going to look for that same level of professionalism and ability to work with everyone, but also being meticulous around how we do our business as we have the example of Council President Bass. So Noel, I know that will be you, I apologize, Councilmember Guyo. Um, if this, if this vote goes through, and it's, these are really big shoes to fill. As Council President Bass, um, laid out in a council meeting a few, uh, weeks ago, it is not for the faint of heart. And I want to be in those council prep meetings so that every Thursday before we, um, go into our rules committee meetings, I want to be there to support because this is not a time for us to slack off at all. And so I just want to be clear to my colleagues on this body that I'm going to hold us to an even higher standard because the people of Oakland deserve that. And I want to make sure that we're organized. And I want to make sure that we have all of the resources that I'm going to lend through my office to your office to get this work done and to get it done efficiently. So I just wanted to share that for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, councilmember.
Want to make a motion for the president of, um, council? Is that out of order? Okay. All right. All right, I want to make.
We need a, a vote. Go ahead.
On item three, move by Councilmember Houston, seconded by Councilmember Ramachandran to elect Councilmember Guyo as president pro temp. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Aye.
Councilmember Guyo.
Uh, aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes. As the District Two seat is vacant.
Madam Clerk and, um, um, President, President Guyo, I want to, uh, put a motion on the floor to take the, the agendas items out of order. I do think it's important that we have as many votes as possible. So I'm going to ask that we move Agenda Item Six, uh, before the next vote.
Is there a second?
Through the, through the chair. So the, the order that these items are taken in, or is that the discretion of the chairperson? So, um, they can be, they certainly can be taken out of order, but it's.
Is what I'm requesting.
You're asking for Item Six to be moved up?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead and call Item Six.
I'll second that.
Through the chair, to Councilmember Houston, uh, you don't need a second as the chair has discretion to move the agenda around as needed. So at the request to take the items out of order, taking Item Six now, which is appointment to the vacant District Two office. And the recommendation is a motion to fill a vacancy in the District Two council office by temporary appointment for up to one hundred and eighty days or the swearing in of the new incumbent after the April fifteenth special municipal election, whichever comes first pursuant to City Charter Section two zero five. And you do have six speakers on this item.
Yes, go ahead and let's hear from the public speakers and we'll take the item. and we'll take the item. Can members of the council, it's a recommendation to nominate for District Two to fill in for Supervisor Bass. The name or the person that's being recommended is Rebecca Kaplan?
I would like to make a brief comment.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Kaplan has not only sat on this body for years, but she's also a very key voting member of several other bodies that are not represented here. We sit together on the Alameda County Transportation Commission. She's currently serving on the, on MTC. She's been a member of the Joint Powers Authority for the Coliseum and has so much information, so much knowledge that we're losing in a lot of the outgoing council members for the city. And so I think it is important that we retain that knowledge, the expertise and acumen that comes with all of these years of service. And particularly as a former council president and the chair of our Finance Committee during these budget challenges, I think it's so critical that we have someone like Councilmember Kaplan to sit with us for this short duration of time as we transition to a new council person through our special elections that will come up in April. So I do want to, with great honor, make a motion to recommend Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan for the vacancy for the District Two office.
Is there a second? Is there a second? It's been moved and segmented, but I want to hear from the public.
Calling in speakers for Item Six. As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. If you are participating via Zoom, please raise your hand so I can identify you and you can have your chance to speak. Supervisor Nikki Fortinato-Bass, Brad Erickson, Cynthia Ramos, David Boatright, Mr. Hazard, Jennifer Finley. If you are in the room or on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I begin my comments, I want to say congratulations, President Guo. I very much, as a former council president for the past four years and having shared with this council what I believe is important to know, I want to be at your service to support your leadership and your success. Certainly, learning those rules of procedure, the Brown Act, making sure that we are available to support and prep before each of these meetings to be successful is important. And I want to be there for you. So please call on me. I want to share that it has been my utmost pleasure to serve as the council member for District Two over the past six years. I greatly appreciate the partnership, the collaboration, the co-governance that I have been able to build together with the constituents, the voters, the businesses, the community organizations of District Two. And with that in mind, as you know, I recommended that Rebecca Kaplan be appointed to fill the vacancy just over the past four months until a new council member is elected. One of the reasons is because there's so much work in front of us. And each of you know, because you serve your own district, how important it is not only to have you there as a council member, but to have your staff supporting and responding to your constituents. And so I want to make sure that the work that I've done with my district continues over that interim period. And specifically, that there is someone like Councilmember Kaplan, who knows how our city works, who knows how to problems solve, who can make sure that critical things, whether it's breaking ground on one of six projects this year, the Lincoln Rec Center happens, whether it is making sure that one of the main encampments where we need to house residents and transition that encampment, like the East 12th Street median in San Antonio, there are very important things that need to be done. And I believe she's well positioned. In addition, as you all know, the budget in front of you is critical. Brad Erickson has ceded his time. He's right there. In addition, the budget is so critical. As you know, she has served as council president. She has led our budget process. As we were working on our mid-cycle budget, she identified a number of sources of revenue that we could potentially identify and add to our budget. And as interim mayor, I had a conversation with Henry Gardner recently, the head of the JPA, the Coliseum JPA, who confirmed there's an additional $2.5 million that we can count on that was unexpected. That is the type of leadership we need during this very difficult budget process. So colleagues, I do hope that you will appoint Rebecca Kaplan to fill that term until the election. And I also want to reiterate my interest in continuing to partner with all of you in my new role. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning. Congratulations, councilmembers. Congratulations, Councilmember Guo. My name is Cynthia Munoz-Ramos. I have had the pleasure of serving as the Chief of Staff for Council President Bass over the last three years. And I wanted to take a moment and also support our council member Rebecca Kaplan in filling in this very important seat to serve our residents, to serve our constituents, to ensure that the projects that we've been working so hard over the last six years continue and some that are so close to completion can see the day. I also wanted to lift up, I'm a resident of also District Two, and I live in the East Lake area. And one of our organizations sent some emails. You've been receiving emails of encouragement for this appointment. And I wanted to lift up one really important one for Dunia that says, you know, some of you may not have received it yet as it's your first day. Dunia, I am writing as a member of East Lake United for Justice and a huge fan of Nikki Bass to support Nikki's choice for council member Rebecca Kaplan to be appointed interim caretaker of D2 council member. Councilmember Kaplan is uniquely qualified. She is ready to jump in and immediately serve our residents. She is also, has been a key in moving some important projects in our city and in our district. And she will provide leadership during this very important biennial budget. Councilmember Kaplan is also, you know, ready to support our priorities around, apologies, I'm a little nervous, breaking ground on the Lakeshore Protective Bike Way in the spring, breaking ground on the Lincoln Rec Center expansion this summer, ensuring that we continue to have improvements in Clinton Park and the community center there. Moving forward, our San Antonio Park Master Plan, advancing the Fire Station Number Four upgrades with the Oakland Fire Department, ensuring that we are working with our state and county and our local community to ensure that our unhoused residents in East 12 can see a just and dignified transition. And as the Chief of Staff of the last three years, I would also offer my time and my knowledge and some of the work that I've done with the clerks in our departments to ensure a smooth transition for US Council President as well as to all the new council members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David Boatright, District Four. I agree that it's important to have people in positions that have a lot of experience. And as someone said, there's a lot of experience that is leaving the city council now. But I think it's also a good time to try to get some new ideas into the city council. And unfortunately, I don't know if it's still possible, but could someone else be nominated for this position? Is it too late? Are there no other people in District Two that want to run for this position? My concern is that even though Councilperson Kaplan has done a lot of work in the past, that she has been very instrumental in the current Coliseum issues that are going on and some other issues that are not particularly going favorably. And I would recommend that somebody else stand, step forward to stand for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Pointing to the Zoom speaker, Jennifer Finley. Please begin your comments.
Good morning. Jennifer Finley, District Two. Supervisor Bass, I was worried when you were leaving the district about our representation here and as council president. And I am very glad to have you on the council, but I am also very glad to have Rebecca Kaplan as hopefully our incoming interim D2 representative. Thrilled to hear that. I certainly hope this goes through. We are losing a lot of institutional memory. And Councilmember Kaplan is an excellent source of that. And in my place as a layperson watching these meetings, I've certainly found her to be repeatedly the one who shows up having found the extra money somewhere. And I just always find that really impressive. This is going to be a tough transition for everyone. Our current president pro tem, Guo, you've had a lot of years on the council. I am genuinely concerned about this leadership. I hope this is a chance for you to show up and prove me wrong. We've had, and we want to keep some shorter meetings when possible, but Councilmember Guo, I hope you are now willing to show up and stay for the later meetings and try and fill the shoes that Council President Bass has left open. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hazard. Do you wish to speak on this item? Okay, thank you. At this time, all names have been called.
Thank you. Members of the council? Any comments, questions? And we have a motion and a second.
I second it.
We actually already had a second by Councilmember Brown. So are we ready to take the roll?
Yes, take the roll.
On Item Six, appointing Councilmember Kaplan to the vacant District Two office, moved by Councilmember Fife, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Aye.
And Councilmember Guo.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes. Ms. Council.
To the chair, I think if, I just want to make a comment that if Councilmember Kaplan is to participate in the rest of this agenda, I assume that we would need to take a break so she can be sworn in.
Let me hear from the attorney. Go ahead.
Yes, to the chair, that is correct. So it's in, if the desire of the body is to have Councilmember Kaplan participate in the rest of this meeting, she'd need to be sworn in as in District Two, which would mean the council would need to recess this meeting briefly.
Let's go ahead and do the swearing in. Come on, we want to move the meeting. Come on.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, and the Charter of the City of Oakland and will truly, in the best of my ability, perform the duties of Councilmember, City of Oakland.
I shall.
Thank you very much. I'll have your paperwork to sign in just a second.
Thank you.
Okay, take us to the next item. Madam Clerk.
Which item are you going to next?
It's, we're on item number, what is it, four? Four.
Going to item four?
Election of the President of the City Council.
Adopt a resolution electing a council member as president of the City of Oakland, I'm sorry, president of the Council of the City of Oakland for a term beginning January 6, 2025 and ending January 4, 2027 pursuant to Oakland City Charter Section 208. And you do have speakers on this item.
Motion to nominate Councilmember Jenkins.
Second.
Motion and a second to support Councilmember Jenkins.
And we will go to the public speakers. Council, I'm sorry, Brad Erickson, Supervisor Nikki Fortinato-Bass, Cynthia Ramos, David Boatright, Mr. Hazard, and Jennifer Finley. Please approach the podium in any order. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you. Thank you.
Hello again. For the record, Nikki Fortinato-Bass. Councilmember Kaplan, firstly, I want to congratulate you. Thank you for being our caretaker for District Two. I very much look forward to supporting you as you work with our constituents as a resident of District Two to support our various needs as well as work on the important work of the city budget. I want to say very sincerely that I do support Councilmember Jenkins as our council president and, by default, our interim mayor. I believe you will do a fantastic job having worked with you over these past few years and having served as the interim president even for the past three weeks. It's a very important role. There is so much important work we have to do. And I think we are very blessed that we have an amazing team from the city administrator and our department directors to the mayor's chief of staff, Lee Hanson, who's been doing a tremendous work on our budget, on the Coliseum deal, to Brooklyn Williams, who's been doing tremendous work on public safety with all of our violence prevention chiefs. And so similarly to the support I've offered to others on this dais, I want to make sure that I'm supportive, whether it's in my county role or in my past role, to ensuring the success, assuming that Councilmember Jenkins becomes the council president and interim mayor. Want to make sure that you have the support that you need from everyone in the community and especially from me. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Madam City Clerk.
If your name was called and you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Mr. Hazard, Mr. Boatright, Ms. Munoz. Otherwise, we can move to the Zoom speakers.
Zoom, go ahead and take us to the Zoom. Mr. Hazard, yeah, he's coming up.
So my comments are not directed at Mr. Jenkins because my comments are going to apply to anybody who would be president and ultimately interim mayor. You are denying the residents, almost 50,000 residents in whatever district, without any representation. That's illegal. Let me read to you so it'll be clear. California law strongly protects the voting rights and representation through various constitutional provisions and statutes. The California Constitution, Article Two, establishes fundamental voting rights. The California Voting Rights Act provides additional protections. The election code governs local election procedures. Local legislative bodies, like city councils or county boards, generally cannot deny representation to qualified voters in their jurisdiction. Create legislation that contradicts state election laws, violate equal protection principles. Critical constitutional concerns, even temporary denial of representation raises equal protection issues. Courts generally disfavor extending periods without representation. So that's what you're doing by this process. This could all been avoided in December had Nikki Bass not assumed the interim mayor. You could have selected another president, either Cobb, Reed, or Kaplan, and you wouldn't have this problem. This is problematic. You've got 50,000 residents who will not have any representation. They need to file an injunction or writ and contact the Attorney General because this is problematic. 50,000 residents in District.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard, your time is up. If your name was called and you wish to speak and if you're in Zoom or in the room, please step to the podium or raise your hand. Otherwise, at this time, all names have been called.
Everyone, Zoom, anyone on Zoom? No? Mr. City Attorney, can you respond to a public speaker in terms of the legality of making this going in this direction?
So the process the council will be following and the city will be following is the one that's spelled out in the City Charter, which says that whoever is serving as council president when there's a vacancy in the mayor's office shall serve as the interim mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council? Members of the council, any comments, questions? There is a motion and a second on the floor. Any, any comments, questions? No? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
On item four, moved by Councilmember Ramachandran, seconded by Councilmember Brown to appoint Councilmember Jenkins as council president. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jenkins, well, yeah. Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Ramachandran?
Aye.
Councilmember Unger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Gaio?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of eight ayes. Congratulations.
So I just want to thank my colleagues for their support. And as Councilmember Fife said, we all have to work together. There are some serious issues in the city, but we're only going to get past it working together. The residents of Oakland absolutely demand it. We want to get back to a place where we're doing our basic services well, where we're getting our unencut folks housed, where we're filling potholes, where our fire stations are open. And I'm sure that we will work together, get this figured out, and make sure that we get the budget figured out, and make sure that we provide a smooth transition for the next mayor. Thank you so much, colleagues.
Thank you. You don't have to leave yet. No, you can have a seat, man. You're part of the public. We need you here. Anyway, so thank you and congratulations. Can you, any public speakers on this item? No? We're fine. Okay, let's take us to the next item.
This is actually your final action item, which is item number five. A resolution pursuant to Rule Four, the council's rules of procedure to confirm the council president's appointments of the council members and chairpersons of the Finance and Management Committee, Public Works and Transportation, Community and Economic Development, Life Enrichment, Public Safety, Rules on Legislation, Education Partnership, and the City Port Liaison Committees. And you do have five public speakers on this item.
Thank you. And for, for our city council, representative, we have put together, there's a list that is being circulated, or, Ms., President, okay. So want to make sure that it's available to the public, please? And I'll read off the recommendations that are put forth. Do you have a copy? Okay. So, so the city council's putting on the, for action today, recommendations for the committees that we have in place for the city council. And Councilmember Ramachandran, can you please read the list for me?
Yes, going in order of timing of the committees per day, starting with Finance, Chair, Councilmember Ramachandran, members, Councilmember Gaio, Councilmember Kaplan, and Councilmember Unger. Public Works and Transportation Committee, Chair, Councilmember Houston, members, Councilmember Unger, Councilmember Kaplan, and Councilmember Gaio. Community and Economic Development, Chair, Councilmember Unger, members, Councilmember Ramachandran, Councilmember Gaio, Councilmember Brown. Life Enrichment, Chair, Councilmember Fife, members, Councilmember Houston, Councilmember Kaplan, and Councilmember Unger. Public Safety, Chair, Councilmember Brown, members, Councilmember Fife, Councilmember Gaio, and Councilmember Houston. Rules and Legislation, Chair, Council President, apologies, Council President Gaio, members, Councilmember Ramachandran, Councilmember Fife, and Councilmember Brown. Education Partnership, Chair, Councilmember Fife, members, Councilmember Houston, Councilmember Gaio, and Councilmember Kaplan. City/Port Liaison, Chair, Councilmember Kaplan, members, Councilmember Fife, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Ramachandran. With the note that whenever Council, interim mayor Jenkins returns to the city council in the next five-ish months, there will need to be some reorganization in order to make sure that interim mayor slash council president Jenkins will be able to serve on an adequate number of committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, yes, Councilmember Fife?
I take a bit of issue with the committee assignments here. I am not interested in chairing two committees. I honestly have concerns with our Ed Partnership Committee as is. I do not recall the last time that they met, and I want to understand from my colleagues if they're comfortable with their assignments as well. I'm not sure where this list came from, but I, I have a few issues here. But as it pertains to myself, I definitely, I want to continue chairing Life Enrichment as I have, have for the last two years. I'm not interested in chairing Education Partnerships, have issues with that committee as it stands, and I'm deeply interested in continuing to participate on Community and Economic Development. Those are just a few of my concerns at this moment.
And, and we will check back. Through the precedent, they've prepared the list and recommendations, but we'll check back with you to make any adjustments, changes that you would recommend to serve. Correct?
Come again, I didn't hear you.
No, no, what I'm saying is that this is an informational list for the public that was put together to share today on the agenda, but we're available to make some adjustments in terms of making some changes to the recommendations. Yes?
So, if possible, can we, through the Chair, to the City Attorney, is it possible to make changes on the dais? If not, is it possible to push this to the Thursday meeting?
Bring this back to another-
Bring it to the Thursday meeting, and here everybody's concerned.
Through the Chair, so, yes, the council can make changes to these, what's before the council today is a resolution to confirm the council president's appointments to these committees, which our council president in this case is Councilmember Gaio. That resolution will require five votes to pass. If there are five council members who agree on the assignments, then it will be affirmed. The, the list that's been circulated can be changed today through the discussion of the council. If the council's unable to agree today, then one option is to continue this meeting to Thursday to, to finish at that time.
Yeah. I would recommend we bring this back so we have a chance for everyone to give their input. Okay.
Council President Gaio, if the main change is replacing Councilmember Fife as Chair of Ed Partnership, that order can be changed right here now, and it seems like the thing that most, that would be easily agreed upon.
Okay. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you. Yeah, I do want to make sure that we accommodate our colleagues' concerns as we undertake this. And so just to be clear, Councilmember Fife, were you saying you'd prefer not to be on Ed Partnership or to stay on it but not chair it?
I, I do not want to chair this committee.
Okay. And you do want to chair Life Enrichment, which is already listed?
Correct. And I, I'm, it's also concerning that I'm not on CED.
Okay.
Okay. Yes?
I, I do want to state for the record, for, for this body, that in the same way that we gave Councilmember Gaio the respect of this position because of his seniority on the body, as the second longest standing council member, I would request that my seniority be respected as well.
Okay, thank, yes, go ahead.
So I would like to make a motion to continue this item to Thursday, January the 8th.
Good. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Good. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second.
And just to be clear, are we, we are referring to the 3:30 PM special meeting on Thursday the 9th?
Through the Chair, to clarify, I think the motion would be to continue this meeting to, to Thursday. I'll defer to the clerk, but I think it would be, may be too late to add this to the agenda on the 9th, but if, if that's possible, then that could be done as well.
Through the Chair, to the City Attorney, and to the body, because we already have the, the materials for this item, we can place this item, we can put this item on the Thursday meeting for the 3:30 meeting.
Good. Okay, thank you. And we'll go ahead and continue this item. Yes, any other comments, questions? Yes. Rebecca, we'll, we'll, okay, we'll bring it back.
So we'll bring it, so the, the recommendation is then for this item to continue to the Thursday the 9th at 3:30?
Yeah.
And then we can have further comments if we need to at that time. I just want to say to my colleagues, yes, both Councilmember Gaio and Councilmember Fife have served with great dedication and for a longer time than many here, and I, I do want to make sure that, that my colleagues' desires are taken into account. And so thank you for that and, and for all of your work and dedication, and so I will support the motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the-
On item five, we have a motion.
Sorry, just as a point out, before we take the vote, we do need to take public comment on this item since it is on today's agenda and some folks have signed up.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. Please raise your hand if you are participating via Zoom. Brad Erickson, Supervisor Nikki Fortinato-Bass, Cynthia Ramos, David Boatright, and Mr. Hazard. Excuse me, in any order, please approach the podium or raise your hand in Zoom if you wish to speak.
David Boatright, District Four. I think this whole discussion could have been avoided by sending, circulating this list around to all the council members, and you pretty much knew who the council members were going to be, and let them provide their input so that it didn't have to be discussed here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boatright. Mr. Hazard, do you wish to speak? Okay, and all names have been called, and there's nobody raising their hand in Zoom. Item five on the motion to continue this item to the Thursday meeting, January 9th at 3:30, moved by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Houston. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran?
Aye.
Councilmember Unger?
Aye.
And Pro Tem Gaio?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes. This item will be continued to Thursday at 3:30. That concludes your discussion. Items moving to-
Thank you so much, colleagues. So, and, and thank you very much for inviting me to join you back for these next few months as we work to undertake incredibly important projects and actions for the City of Oakland, and including making sure we are bringing in the extra money. And as Supervisor Bass noted, we did get confirmation of some additional millions we will be bringing back thanks to our success bringing in events and revenue through the Oakland Arena and Coliseum. So that is an example of successfully bringing money back.
Okay, thank you.
As well as other funds we've identified. I did want to make a procedural recommendation for us to consider, which I've mentioned to the attorney, and we will work on agendizing it, which is that because we are in this unusual time, the elected council president became acting mayor, the elected council president, Pro Tem, became acting council president, and therefore, the position of Pro Tem is now vacant, and so I would recommend that we would agendize to a subsequent meeting to fill a acting Pro Tem to serve in the role that now Acting President Gaio has vacated for this time period so that we would have a full complement of officerships to function with in the coming months. And so obviously, we'll, we'll work through the proper process to agendize that, and wishing you all a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me hear from the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Moving to open forum, we have Seth Oyer, Mr. Hazard, Jennifer Finley, Isaac Cos Reed, in any order, please approach the podium.
Seth Oyer, S-E-T-H-O-L-Y-E-R. I get used to spelling my name so many times because I've been in front of the press complaining about the decision to close firehouses. But I'm going to start off by saying a huge thank you to Councilmember Unger, which is very strange to say, but it's, I'm proud to say it, and I'm proud of everything that he's done, and it's just incredible to see him up here on the dais. We joked that it was going to be a swearing in today, but I said it was going to be a swearing at. I'm going to change and just say, we had a, a little press conference out front of City Hall earlier today to highlight the closures that happened effective today at 8:00 AM. So Councilmember Ramachandran, I want you to know, and I want Councilmember Houston to know that a firehouse in your district is closed, and those folks are going to be waiting 10 to 12 minutes for fire protection. It's one of those things that I understand that budgets are tough and at times are tough and that there's peaks and valleys, but Oakland has been in a valley for a long time, and for the longest time, Local 55, the union that represents the firefighters and the Fire Department, has been the only thing that's been filling in those low spots. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I'm deeply concerned about the safety of everyone in the City of Oakland. So as a new member of the council, I understand that you've got a lot on the worksheet ahead of you, but remember, the basic functions of a city government are to provide for public safety, and half of that, effective today, has been deeply affected. Please keep that in the front of your mind and stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
I hope the residents understand the critical nature of your not having any representation on this body. It behooves you to look at legal counsel because you do have a cause of action. You voted for someone who is not representing you. The mayor, though, quote, is a strong mayor, former government, the mayor has no legislative authority. Your concerns are not going to be addressed. Go to the League of Women Voters, NAACP, or seek legal counsel because you do have a cause of action. What the city attorney opined is typical. The law says one thing, and they're going to twist the law to have you to believe something else. Likewise, with regards to the item seven coming up Thursday, the use tax, it's not a sales tax, it's a use tax, AB 1155, co-authored by Charles Carlton, Assembly Member, and Nancy Skinner, and authored also by Senator Lonny Hancock. This was addressing Amazon. The city and the city attorney have you believe it's a sales tax. It's a use tax. There's no enforcement in it. Do not vote for, and this council has to do the second reading. Do not vote for it. There's no enforcement. You're not going to get any money from it, but the city wants you to believe it's a sales tax. It's a use tax. And you could go to my website, cleanOakland.com, and you get all the answers you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard. Isaac Cos Reed, Jennifer Finley, if you wish to speak, please, excuse me, please raise your hand or step to the podium.
Good afternoon, City Council and Honorable School Board. Happy New Year, Happy Inauguration Day. Today was beautiful to walk up and see the front doors of City Hall open. I ran into staff members. It really felt like a beginning of something new and exciting. Also, I think in the words spoken today by our returning and newly elected council members, it's truly been inspirational. I know when I walked in today, I felt the solemnity of this place, that here, the decisions of the people of Oakland are made. And this is the only time, only time in any given two years where all of you are in one chamber together. And so I just want to honor that and thank everybody who stepped up to run and is serving our city. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last call, Jennifer Finley. At this time, all names have been called.
All the names have been called. So with that, there are no more items on the agenda, so with, thanks to all of you and welcome, and the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
And just give us a moment to transition to the OUSD Board Meeting. If the OUSD members can come back so we can transition to the OUSD meeting and you can get, get your oath.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will go ahead and, if we can settle the room a bit, and we'll go ahead and continue the rest of today's program. All right, so if all of our school board members and representatives and family, if you want to come up and take your seat, we'll go ahead and get started. All right, thank you. All right, Clerk Reed. Clerk Reed, you let me know once you are ready. All right, sounds good. Well, thank you, folks, again, for those that stayed or sticking around and those joining us online. Thank you also. Very delighted to continue. And if you don't mind, can we, uh, can we pull those doors? That would be great. All right, thank you. So I will turn the floor over to our esteemed Madam City Clerk to go ahead with the swearing in of our school board members.
Good afternoon. If I can have the school board directors of Districts One, Three, Five, and Seven to please stand to receive your oath. And as you know, you don't have to repeat after me, just raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of California, and the Charter of the City of Oakland, and will truly, in the best of my ability, perform the duties of School Board Director, Oakland Unified School District. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Certainly, congratulations. On behalf of all of the city of Oakland, congratulations and thank you for all that you do and your continued partnership going forward. And at this time, I would like to give each of you, those that were sworn in, an opportunity about five minutes or so to share a few words. So I will call the representative from District One, Rachel Latta, to share a few words. Did you want to come up here or?
Can I?
That works, okay.
I just want to, I feel like echo the words of others who have come before me today and obviously before to say how grateful I am to the voters of Oakland and the current school board members for this opportunity to serve the students and the community of Oakland. I also want to thank my family for being so patient, for waiting to see me sworn in, my parents, my, my kids, Marcus, Lucinda, and Desmond. I love you all so much. Thank you for being some of my best campaigners. And, and you are the reason that I'm up here. I think, I have always felt that public education is a cornerstone of our democracy and one of the most important duties that we have as a society to provide for our children and for the future. I think it wasn't until I had the privilege of being your mom that I understood that every kid only has one year. You only have one kindergarten year, you only have one first grade year, you only have one year to be a senior in high school. And, and the school board, I'm going to take that urgency with me to make sure that all of our kids in Oakland have an excellent education and have every single opportunity that they deserve. And to my colleagues on the school board, I look forward to working with you. I have, I think, through my work as a parent advocate prior, have always wanted to be very honest and transparent and look forward to working with you, even if we don't agree, and we won't on everything, but working with each and every one of you on how to make our district better. So thank you again. Thank you all.
Thank you, Director. And so I'd like to call up Representative District Three, Mr. Van Cedric Williams.
All right. Thank you, brother. I want to thank Rakeshaw, Edgar Rakeshaw, most definitely. He's the parliamentarian for OUSD. He's helped me with my growth and understanding of vision. The first person is Edgar, so I just want to know how much I appreciate you. My second person is Cecily Meyer Cruz, my partner, my friend, my thought partner, my motivator, unconditional love and friendship. I've learned so much from you, and so I just want to thank you. I also want to thank my mom, Sally Johnson. She passed away in twenty, January twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three. And that really shook me a great deal. I wasn't sure if I was going to run for the board a second time because I missed spending a lot of time with her before she passed away. So I had a really long reflection period. And, you know, I'm glad that I stepped in. I want to thank my board members, all of the current board, as well as the future new board elects to come in. Thank you, all of you were motivation for me, most definitely. I think that it's really important to, you know, fight for what you believe in. And I believe in black students, black students, we all do, we all do. But I really feel strongly that in West Oakland, we've had a long history of really fighting for the right things in the community, lifting up- It's, it's in the soil, it's in the community, it's in the culture. And so really, after having conversations with many of the community folks, I decided to make another run at this because, as we always say, there's unfinished business. You know, you step into something, your first time, you're learning it. Now, um, as you're returning a second term, I'm really excited to, you know, use the networks and the lessons that I've learned on the board to actually move, uh, public education and academic results for many of our African-American students. And I, I will challenge each and every one of you to continue to talk about our black students because, uh, there has been history, there's been a history of educational reform that has actually done the complete opposite. Our kids have been experimented on. And so we have to actually take, uh, the lessons that we learn and stand firm that we're gonna prioritize all of our students first, we're gonna put the Eagles over aside, the name-calling aside, the personal innuendos aside, and really focus on lifting up these academic results for our kids. Lastly, oh, that's close, I got a minute fifty-seven. Lastly, I do want to thank some important folks that were my thought partners in this campaign. First and foremost, the Oakland Public School teachers. I'm a teacher, I've been teaching for twenty-four years, and I've been very honored to be a teacher. I think it is the best profession, and I've seen so many amazing students and educators all come together to create community schools, uh, schools for our kids to thrive. And so to all the public school teachers who supported me, thank you very much. I, I don't walk away from it, I, I stand proudly as an educator, uh, throughout the state of California. Also, I want to thank, uh, OEA's President Kapalate Ransfer. She has been an inspiration to me as well, and I just really want to acknowledge, uh, her passion for, uh, for her members and working in partnership with the district. Pacolia Mandago, Councilwoman Carol Fife, Keith Brown, want to thank you, brother, for... For believing in me. Thank you, man. Also, I want to thank Rick Wathan, Jennifer Shonowsky, Deidre Robinson, Ron Muhammad, Wanda Stewart, Common Visions, Coach Peters, Coach Tab Scott, Brian Arlanda McGee. There's been so many folks in West Oakland that, uh, have come to the defense of our kids. And I'm gonna go ahead and jump off. Just a reminder, one of my sheros is, um, Shirley Chisholm. She says, um, "If there's not a seat for you at the table, bring a folding chair and move yourself on, and make it a white folding chair in case somebody needs to understand what you're really talking about." And last but least, James Baldwin, "I can't believe what you say when I see what you do." And so there's so many folks that walk around and say what they're gonna do, and they're so great to advocate. And then when you see actually what they actually do, that's a disappointment. So I'm gonna challenge my board members all to step up and really actually do something more than just talk about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. And I would like to call up Representative District Five, Ms. Patrice Berry.
Oh, uh, I did expect my family to come up with me, but it's okay if you stay there. I'll just speak to you, which is also fine. You don't, you don't have to, but you can. My daughter's been waiting. Y'all should give her a special shout-out, because she's seven and... So I first want to thank the voters of Oakland who trusted me and believed, who are trusting me and who believe in me, and this would not be possible without you. But I also am so grateful to have my family here today because my parents, watching them, and the experiences I had throughout my childhood brought me to this moment today. It's because of my parents' relentless, relentless belief in the power of education. Where's my mom? My mom's constant advocacy and activism. My parents are both community servants. My father has been pastoring a church for many years. And watching his servant leadership throughout my life, I take all of those lessons with me. And so first and foremost, I want to thank my family as well. I was taught that education is liberation, that it's possibility, that it's dignity, and I also learned that it's a shared responsibility. So I got really excited here today, being among my colleagues, but also the folks on City Council, the new city attorney, the leaders in this room, because I don't know if you felt it or if you heard it, but there's a lot of synergy. And even in the disagreement that folks referenced, there seems to be a lot of alignment, and I'm excited, and I feel honored and humbled to be able to step into service at this moment when I agree with someone who said it earlier, we need leadership, positive leadership, loving leadership now more than ever. And I believe today, I'm leaving more affirmed, that the kind of school system I'm here to fight for is possible. Just so you all know, I'm fighting for the kind of school system where we can look ten years down the line and know where the money's coming and going. I'm fighting for the kind of school system where any parent or caregiver can send their child to the school right next door to them without any concern about how they will be loved on. Our special education students will get the services they're entitled to without having to grumble and complain and knock down doors to receive them. And any child going into fourth grade knows how to read. Where our high school students can start high school regardless of how they start and leave our high schools excited about and prepared for the life that they want to lead after that. That's what I want for my kids, and that's what Oakland deserves. And I feel today, I'm so excited to join you all and to join the leadership across the city to make that possible. I'm really, I'm just jazzed. So thank you. I actually, um, I'm not finished. I wrote down, because I'm not like, I'm not a veteran here, like Director Williams. I, I should have done this beforehand, but I wrote down while I was sitting there, all the people I want to thank. And I know I'm gonna forget someone, so I apologize in advance. But David, Libby Schaaf, your modeling, steadiness, and consistency and bold vision, your mentorship, both of you, I thank you so much for that. Kira Chandini Christian, Councilmember Gao, um, former school board members, some of whom are in this room, Tiffany and Brusada, former students who walked with me during my campaign, Vivica Stafishe, their son Carter, Kimmy, uh, Uche Rodolfo, Amber, there are so many, I know I'm forgetting somebody. Director Lerman, did I say you? And Mike Hutchinson and Sam Davis, you trusting me and pouring into me, your time and your mentorship, your counsel. I'm so grateful. I'm gonna need much more than that. This is a village effort. I, I hope you heard today how people are committed to doing this work together in unity, and I'm excited about the support I have behind me and look forward to calling on you for much more of that hereafter. So thank you all.
All right, thank you, Director. And finally, I'd like to call Representative District Seven, Mr. Clifford Thompson.
Thank you very much. It would be remiss of me if I would not thank God, first of all, because I've been given the opportunity to actually work with individuals and actually serve individuals. And so I thank God for that. I also want to thank all of you for coming out this afternoon in order to support the school board in what we're doing. I would like to thank my school board members, people whom I've worked with, and I've had a wonderful experience, learned a lot, and I'm so excited about that. I want to thank also our civic leaders, and I'm looking at an individual who has been sticking by my side for quite some time, helping to guide me, and that's our former mayor, Libby Schaaf. Let's give her a great big hand. Of course, I don't want to call any more names, because I'm gonna forget somebody also, so I'm not gonna call any more names. But, um, as I stand here, I'm really humbled because I have the opportunity to actually work with individuals to make sure that we provide a service to our students in Oakland Unified School District. But if you'll allow me for a few moments, I just want to tell a couple of stories as I present what I have to say today. I remember years ago, probably about six years ago, wondering whether or not I would even try to run for a school board position. I remember there was an individual by the name of Dirk Tolson. And I went to him and several others because I wanted to know, what should I do? And he said, "Make sure it's in your heart that you want to do something for the kids. Make sure you have established values, and you've embraced values, and as you think about your values, make sure you embrace integrity in everything you do." And the one thing I added to that was transparency. I believe I should be transparent in everything I do, everything I say, especially in trying to accomplish the goals of an academic, um, education for all of our students in Oakland. As I ran four years ago and was elected by my constituents, I want to pause and say, "Thank you for electing me then. Thank you, my constituents, for having faith in me, allowing me to have a second term to represent District Seven and complete the work that I began." As most of you know, I am very interested in making sure that all of our students have the opportunity that many of us adults have already experienced. We already have letters behind our names. We've already done that college thing. Hey, it's time now to reach back and grab by the hands those little ones, and let's bring them up and make sure they have a chance to have a great education. So that's what I'm all about. And you can check my track record. I decided that it was very important for us to have in legislation something that identified academic possibilities for kids. And so, and thank you, Director Lerman. He and I put together a resolution in order to increase the academic growth of students in English, reading, language arts, and also mathematics, and also not leaving out the high school students, making sure that they had the opportunity to participate in A to G requirements so that we could make sure that especially our students of color have the opportunity to go to college and not have to take a bonehead English class, many of you guys know what I'm talking about, a bonehead English or math class in order to participate in their academic pursuits. So with all of that said, I want to say thank you very much for this time. Thank you for allowing me to actually serve Oakland school kids for another four years. I really appreciate all of you. Thank you kindly.
Okay, was, was that the signal that we're taking over now for our meeting? Okay, thank you. So, um, I feel very uncomfortable with how we're sitting here. So I don't, I don't know if I want to chair a meeting or facilitate a meeting with my back to everyone here. So, um, if it's, if it's okay, I, I think if I can move to the end of the table there, if that's...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you all for allowing me to move, and, um, thank you, everyone, for being here today and everyone's patience as we waited till our turn as a school board to address our issues. So I think, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the first thing that we need to do is do roll call to establish quorum. Mr. Rakeshaw.
Yes, uh, Acting President Hutchinson. Uh, but before I do that, Mr. Hutchinson, I just want to, uh, you know, Director Williams acknowledged me as an individual. I just want to say that I can't do the work, and we can't do the work of the board plus eleven other Brown Act bodies in the district without a team. And I want to introduce to you the two other members of the team who support twelve other legislative bodies, uh, eleven others beside the board. Uvind Sechow. And Corey Hollis. Thank you. Now, upon the roll call. Student directors are absent. Director Latta?
Present.
Director Brohard?
Uh, here.
Director Williams?
Present.
Director Barry?
Present.
Director Bachelor?
Here.
Director Thompson?
Present.
Acting President Hutchinson?
Present.
Quorum, present.
Great, thank you. And, um, hopefully, my colleagues on the board have noticed that we just have hot mics in front of us now, so everyone just try to remember that and act accordingly. So our first, and, and excuse me for everyone in the audience, I'm gonna try to pivot both ways. It's very strange sitting in this position here. No, no, it, it, it's, it's okay. It's not gonna help that much. So what we, we have a couple of orders of business today. We're going to be electing our officers for the upcoming year, and then we have a couple of organizational items that yearly get voted on in our yearly organizational meeting. I just want to note, uh, uh, former director, ooh, that's weird saying it, Davis and I, we're, we're talking about how this is our fourth year, um, our fourth year organizational meetings, and this is the first one that's actually been in person. So we're still new to this, even people who have been on the board. So, and please, Mr. Rakeshaw, correct me if I'm wrong. So the item that we are going to be doing first is public comments. And these public comments are going to be public comments for anything that's on the agenda today, which will be the two organizational items at the end of the agenda. I'm working backwards now. Before that will be the vice president's vote, and first is going to be the vote for president. My understanding is, because we aren't gonna do nominations and then public comment. So my understanding is for the president today that Director Brohard plans on running, and I plan on running, and for vice president, Director Bachelor and Director Thompson plan on running. And if there's any other nominations that happen during the process, excuse me for not announcing it ahead of time. I just don't know that now. And so we're gonna move into public comments on anything on today's agenda for fifteen minutes. Okay? With that, uh, do we have any, uh, speakers that signed up for public comment?
Uh, we have one vice president. Uh, how much time would you like?
How much time would you like to allow for public comment?
We can do two minutes.
All right. One speaker is Jamo K. Hinton.
Congratulations to all of you all. Thank you for your service, President Davis. Who's outgoing? Director Lerma, thank you so much for your service and time, because you did a little bitty term, ran hard for a little bitty term. So thank you for stabilizing the district in the way that you did. I only put in one speaker card, and it was really just to congratulate you all and to say that it's never too late to really look at the knowledge base that you need and the skill that you need to actually run this school district, right? To do what this school district is meant to do, which is to serve young people. It's not to paint buildings, it's not to do all those other kinds of things, school buses. Those are great things, and they add to our children's education, but it really is about whether or not they know how to do great things and that they're learning always. So I want to encourage you all to get the skills, get the knowledge, do the training, do the work in order that you can actually center yourselves and be focused on what it is that young people need. And my great adage in the learning that I did after 12 years in governance was that really student outcomes are not changing until adult behaviors change, right? So the onus is on us to be really, really responsible because our young people really are needing us in the same way that our parents. You know that I was considered kind of the queen of charter schools. Then I went on to actually work for the Association of Charter Schools for California, and it is only because I believe that all children deserve a quality education. I believe that there are public schools, I know that there are public schools, and I know that you have a responsibility to support all students, and I, I hope that you will step up in that particular kind of way. And then to new leadership, I know different, people are running for different offices. Good luck as you do that work, it's additional work, of course, but thank you for wanting to step up on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And so we had no, no further public comments?
No further, no further speakers, Mr. Vice President.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hollis. Which now brings us on to item D. And so before we kick into it, I'm just going to go over again how this works for us here. So item D is going to be nominations for president for the governing board. We're going to open it up to anyone, can nominate anyone, including themselves. Then once the nominations are made, each nominee is going to have two minutes to make a speech if they would like to, and then we go to board comment and board vote. And for president, and then it'll be the same thing for vice president, it requires four votes for somebody to be elected, and for president, we will keep voting rounds until we have four votes for a president-elect. Did I leave anything out of that, Mr. Rakestraw?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I get this right. So what, what we're going to do now is open up the nominations for president of the governing board. Director Bachelor.
I would like to nominate Director Brohard.
Great, I just, I'm watching as somebody writes, so, great, thank you. Yes, Director Thompson.
I would like to nominate Director Hutchinson, Vice President Hutchinson.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations that anyone would like to make? Seeing none, we will close nominations, and now we will have two minutes each for the nominees. Director Brohard, did you want to go first?
Sure.
When, when, yes. I was going to say, unless you really want to stand, so we're, we're trying to figure out how to make it formal here while still feel good about things. I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
Comfortable at the table under my chair. Good afternoon, board directors, community members, general counsel. I'm truly honored to accept this nomination to serve as the board president. I want to first begin by congratulating our newly elected board members Rachel Latta and Patrice Barry and our returning board members Van Cedric Williams and Dr. Clifford Thompson. I want to thank the people who nominated me for trusting me to lead during this pivotal time. As we look to the future, we face tremendous responsibilities, making decisions that will shape the direction of our district for many years. Our focus is clear, ensuring that every student receives a quality education. This means prioritizing student achievement, fostering working conditions that enable our staff to thrive, and ensuring site safety as a foundation for our success. We know that the resources we provide to our schools are essential to achieving these goals. Every action must center on equity, equality, and the belief that every child in Oakland deserves the best education possible. Additionally, we must focus on our students with the greatest needs, including those students who, disabled students, newcomers and English language learners, unhoused and foster youth, and African-American students. The next few years will undoubtedly be challenging and exciting as we navigate restructuring, redesign, and re-envisioning of OUSD. The decisions we make now will have a lasting impact, not only on our schools, but on our entire community. In the next month, we will make decisions about budget adjustments, we will make decisions about asset management, we will be looking at how to, the possibility of workforce housing, the possibility of a career training center for our transitional aged youth, and we will be looking at, again, as speakers before we have talked about, making sure that all our students leave third grade reading and that we address the needs of our readers above third grade who have not learned, have done at a grade level. This work cannot be done in isolation alone. We must work collectively as a board and collaborate with district leadership, labor partners, students, and site staff to address these critical issues before us and set a strong, forward-looking direction for our district. The board and leadership must be transparent with our families and communities as we make budget decisions and engage in the redesign, restructuring, and re-envisioning of the district. We must engage with parent leaders at the sites and in our advisory committees to do this work as partners. Together, we will ensure that every school is equipped to meet the needs of its students and that every staff member is supported in providing exceptional educational experience. And again, thank you for the opportunity to run for this office.
Great, thank you. And I'll just launch into my two minutes. This setup feels very, almost uncomfortable here, but, so if you could start my clock too on my two minutes, please. First, especially since I didn't get to be inaugurated and give a big speech, I really want to thank my mother for being here today. I'm in this position and do what I do because of my mother, who was a 40-year kindergarten teacher here in Oakland, and actually took me to my first school board meeting in Oakland when she was still pregnant with me, fighting for maternity leave for Oakland teachers. So thank you, moms, for being here, and unfortunately, my nieces who still attend OUSD schools were not able to be here today. You know, today was kind of reflective for me, just thinking back on our inauguration two years ago and where the district stood at that point. Two years ago, the district, there was open rebellion every place. We were months away from our biggest round of mass school closures that had ever been seen, and our district had basically been in lockdown for two years during the pandemic. And so during that 2023, when I was elected board president, we were able to rescind those school closures. We were able to bring back in-person school board meetings. We instituted the reuse of speaker cards and actually having processes to be able to move us forward, and I really worked hard to set up the board to be in a better position going forward. I think one of the things that we really need to do as a school board is we need to be able to raise the bar on our work. We are a very inexperienced school board, just by definition of having flipped all seven school board seats and won four-year cycle, and I think we as a board are still in the process of learning, and relying on that experience should be key for us moving forward. If I'm elected board president, I will not be running as, for an officer next year. I wasn't planning on running for an officer this year until President Davis asked me to run for vice president to serve with him. I'm very proud of how I've been able to work with everyone in my years on the board. I've crafted resolutions with a number of people, and I've been really focused on where our main work has been by chairing the Budget and Finance Committee and passing the Three Rs. resolution unanimously. So hopefully, I can count on everyone's support, and hopefully, we can move together collectively as a board going forward. Thank you. So now, I'm going to switch back to facilitating the meeting. So now for our process is time for board comments, and we're going to try to, and I'm sorry if I look towards you strangely, Director Williams, the clock that I'm trying to look, no, no, you don't need to move, but it's just right behind your head, that's why I keep looking over there. So we have, the way our process works now is we can do board comments. If everyone makes, wants to make a comment, we can just go through everyone. If we want to do it in a way where if somebody wants to make a comment, to just let me know and I'll acknowledge you to make a comment, we're going to try to really just have everyone make one comment unless everyone wants to make a comment and there's a need for a second round. Okay? And then after board comments will be the actual vote. So were there any board comments? Did anyone want to comment?
I mean, I'll make a comment.
Please, please, and I think maybe pull the mic a little closer to you.
I just want to say that I do not appreciate that the first thing I have to do as a school board member is make a vote like this with the context that I do not have, but I'm up for the challenge, and I want to remind everyone of some of the things I heard today that are inspiring me in this moment, one of which was the invitation to love life, true Oakland style, to lead with love and integrity, and regardless of what our leadership looks like after today, my hope and my ask of all the board members is that we throw our weight behind the leadership and behind each other, because I really do believe, and I know you know this, and I don't have to say this out loud, but just to say it, it's going to require the kind of change we want to see, it's going to require our solidarity. Our students deserve it, I think we deserve it, our parents deserve it, our educators deserve it, and if we really want to be a part of making Oakland better, I'm hoping that we're going to find a way to work together regardless, because I really have no idea how this is going to turn out, regardless of how the leadership turns out. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, I'm not going to press anyone to have to make a comment. So, Mr. Rakestraw, I think we are ready to call the question of the vote for board president between Director Brohard and Director Hutchinson.
Yes. Given that there are two nominees for this position, and the statutory requirement is that before you do any other business is to elect a president of the board. Absent a president, you may not do anything else. This is why it's called an annual organizational meeting. So I will ask you to state the name of the party for whom you are voting, and if you are not voting for any of the candidates, you may indicate that you are abstaining. It requires four votes to elect to the presidency of the governing board. On the roll call, Director Latta.
Director Brohard.
Director Brohard.
Director Brohard.
Director Williams.
Director, Director Brohard.
Director Barry.
Director Hutchinson.
Director Bachelor.
Director Brohard.
Director Thompson.
Director Hutchinson.
Acting President Hutchinson.
Hutchinson.
Upon the roll call, Director Brohard has been elected by four votes to the presidency for the 2025 term.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Rakestraw, do I turn over the gavel now, or do I do vice president vote and then turn over the gavel?
You may proceed with the vice presidency vote.
Okay.
At that point, the elected leadership will be completed.
Okay, thank you. So now we are up on the vice presidential vote, and that'll work the same way as the president. There'll be nominations. Each nominee will have, it looked like they were given three minutes and not the two, but each nominee will have a few minutes to speak, and then there'll be a vote, and it takes four votes for the vice president to be elected. So are there any, I'll start, I would like to nominate Director Thompson for vice president. And are there any other? Director Brohard.
I would like to nominate Director Bachelor for vice president.
Okay, any other nominees? Okay, and so Director Thompson, since I guess I nominated you first, did you want to take your time first?
Certainly. Thank you, Director Hutchinson. Spanning, or looking at my span of 40 years in education, everything from a classroom teacher to an administrator to a secondary coordinator, and then going back into the classroom, working as a classroom teacher at the sixth grade level, also having 16 years as a college professor, I understand the longevity or the spectrum of how one should learn at the elementary level and then carry that learning all the way through to the college level, and then understanding that if one doesn't have what's needed at a certain level, then you have to figure out how to structure or fill in the gaps of what that person doesn't have. In addition to that, I understand servant leadership. I understand that a leader has to also be a servant in what he or she does. And I think back to a person that I read, his name was Greenleaf, who actually talked about servant leadership, and I think about how I need to take that and use that at the board level. I think I've done that. I think most of my colleagues realize that I have tried to be the example of how a collaborative board person should function on the board. Regardless to whether one believes in a certain thing or another, I believe the unifying responsibility of a board member is to make certain that you hold back your idea in order to advance the unity of the whole. So I'm going to date myself a little bit. I, I talked about hot bench, and many of you might know what hot bench is. You have three individuals who are attorneys, and they, or judges, and they come up with their idea, but then when the final idea is presented, all three must come together with a unified thought. That's what I plan to do as your vice president.
Thank you. Director Bachelor.
Thank you. It is with great humility and deep respect for this board and our community that I ask for your vote for vice president. As we consider who will help us lead this new board, I would like to share the values that I hold in my approach to leadership. I believe that we can achieve great things through shared governance and a solution-oriented mindset. To do that, we must seek to understand the root cause of issues we face and work together to find practical and sustainable solutions. I'm committed to navigating through the challenges that we have ahead of us and with creativity and focus in a long-term well-being of the district as our guiding light. Every voice matters, and I will work to ensure that all of us, whether board directors, guardians, students, and educators, have an equal say in shaping what our district looks like. At the core of every decision, we must be, we must see the well-being of our students. Student-centered decision-making means viewing everything from the, from policies to budgets through the lens of improving the educational experience of our students and creating opportunities for them to succeed both academically and personally. As public servants, we have the responsibility to be good stewards of public money and be transparent about our decision-making process. We must manage the funds that we are entrusted with with wisdom and efficiency, ensuring that resources are directed towards initiatives that directly benefit our students and enhance the quality of education. Fiscal responsibility must always go hand in hand with equity, and ensuring that every dollar spent advances our district's mission and values. As vice president, I will prioritize open communication, ensuring all board actions and decisions are clear and accessible to the community. I once again humbly ask for your vote for vice president.
Great, thank you. And now we go to board comment. So I would just like to make a quick, brief comment, just kind of echoing the, what I heard from Council Member Fife earlier today. I'm a little worried about the, the potential lack of experience for the board leadership that we're looking at. I'm not very happy with some of the proposed appointments now. I don't think it's very fair how it's been spread out, and I don't think it's leaning on the experience that the board has. And so this is a big step, stepping into board leadership, especially for people who have not been in board leadership before, and it just really makes me worry that we have a, a lack of experience there and what that's going to do over the next couple of months as we try to hit the ground running with some very big decisions that we have coming up. So I just want to put that out there, and, you know, I'm just a little concerned about it, and this definitely wasn't the equitable coming-together start that I was hoping for from this board. Thank you. So seeing no other comments, I think we are ready to call the question. Mr. Rakestraw for vice president, please.
The process is similar as before. I will call the name of the I will call the name of the two nominees. Please state the name of the person for whom you are voting, and you have the, also have the option of abstaining. On the roll call for the vice president, the student directors are absent. Director Latta.
Director Bachelor.
President Director Brohard.
Director Bachelor.
Director Williams.
Director Bachelor.
Director Berry.
Director Thompson.
Director Bachelor.
Director Bachelor.
Director Thompson.
Director Thompson.
Acting President Hutchinson.
Thompson.
Up on the roll call, Director Bachelor has been elected vice president of the board, having received four votes on, for the office for the 2025 term.
And, and now I am turning over the, the gavel to President Brohard.
Thank you, Director Hutchinson. We will now go on to, oops, sorry. The annual, we'll be looking at the government, the governing board. Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this is your resolution for the increase in governing board member compensation.
Madam President, we should be doing the first resolution before any others.
Oh, that's, okay, sorry. Sorry about that. This next item is J1, 2025 Annual Organization Meeting Governing Board, Compliance With Legal Requirements and Other Items Of Business Necessity Except Governing Board Member Increase Compensation.
Madam, Madam President, I just want to explain, this resolution is a requirement for the annual organization of the board. It does three things. If, if adopted, it verifies the people who are authorized to sign financial documents on behalf of the district. That's delineated in Attachment A. B sets the annual organization, the annual schedule of meetings, regular meetings of the Board of Education, which is in Attachment B. If adopted, this would continue the traditional regular meeting dates of the board on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, except in July when there is a recess. It also authorizes only one meeting on the second Wednesday in November and December. It also outlines when documents should be submitted by the superintendent and administration, and the timeline, which of those documents gets processed so that they can get to the board in a timely manner for its consideration. Attachment three is the, under the board's bylaws, the party who is elected president of the board is allowed to nominate positions, people, members of the board for positions on standing committees of the board, which there are four, which I will do not delineate here, and liaisons to the various other bodies that are listed in that attachment you have before you enter consideration as this matter goes forward, then the nominations by the president of the board.
So do we have a motion to adopt the, are we doing them all, I'm sorry, Mr. Rakeshaw, are we doing them all as?
You, you're doing, you're doing.
Okay.
All of that, which I've just stated, is contained in this first agenda.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this, these attachments?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The move has been made by Director, Vice President Bachelor and Director Thompson. Is, are there any comments on this, on these attachments? Okay. We are ready for a roll call, Mr. Rakeshaw.
Okay. On the roll call to adopt item 25004, which is the resolution approving all of the things enumerated. Director Latta.
Yes.
Director Hutchinson.
Yes.
Director Williams.
Yes, sir.
Director Thompson.
Yes.
Vice President Bachelor.
Yes.
President Brohard.
Yes.
Motion's adopted.
With that, I, I realize I skipped the president's speech, but I kind of gave that in the nominating, so I think we can move on without the speech.
Although point of, point of order, Director Berry did not vote. Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm concentrating on all the interactions here. Director Berry, yes, I'll record you, yes. Thank you very much.
And with that, there are no further items, correct?
There's also the vice president gets two minutes. I would like to take those two minutes if possible.
Let's see who will speak here.
Okay. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for those of you who trusted me in the vice presidency. It is an incredible honor and I'm truly humbled for this opportunity to serve our community in this capacity. I stand here today, ready to work alongside with you all in the spirit of collaboration, respect, and commitment are, are our shared values. I know that we are not a board without differences. It is no secret that we have faced challenges and disagreements, and at times we have been divided. But I believe that the strength in our board is in our diversity of thought and perspective. While we may not always agree on every single issue, our commitment to the well-being and success of our students unites us. We are all here because we care deeply about public education, our students, and our community. As vice president, my approach will be centered on finding common ground. I recognize that our work will require compromise, open dialogue, and a willingness to listen, especially when it's difficult. And it's not always easy to come together when we have differing viewpoints, but I am committed to fostering an environment where we can have those conversations in good faith with respect with, to each other's opinions. We must also acknowledge that true collaboration means understanding and embracing the complexities of the issues we face. Whether it's improving academic outcomes, addressing equity, or ensuring that we are good stewards of public resources, there is not always a clear path. But if we are open to hearing from one another and willing to find solutions and incorporate some of our ideas, I believe we can make lasting, meaningful change. I am also committed to ensuring that our decisions are driven to support our, our all Oakland students, and that will come through, that, that is a guiding principle of mine. Whether we agree on the approach or not, we must always prioritize the needs of our students we serve because at the end of the day, that's the reason we're here. To the community we serve, I pledge to you to be your voice at the table, and I'm willing to make every effort to engage authentically in order to build the thriving public school system we need. We need to hear your concerns, hopes, and needs so that we can make the best decisions as a board. Authentic community engagement is a promise to listen, to act in the best interest of all Oakland students, and to be transparent in our work. Thank you.
Madam President, we have another item on the agenda for which you must see, see whether there is a motion and a second.
Under your business.
The item is J225005. It is whether or not the board wishes to increase its annual compensation.
Motion to consider item J2?
Second.
And are there any board comments?
Who moved it, please?
Director Latta and Second Bachelor.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President. And if there are no comments, if we can have the roll call and the vote, please.
Yes, on the motion, whether to adopt the increase in the board's compensation as enumerated in the resolution. Director Latta.
Yes.
Director Hutchinson.
Yes.
Director Williams.
Yes, sir.
Director Berry.
Yes.
Director Thompson.
Yes.
Vice President Bachelor.
Yes.
And President Brohard.
Yes.
The motion's adopted unanimously.
And if there are no further items, we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
[applause][1755.83]